We're live now.
Productive, you know, so it was worth it.
I couldn't make it, but I signed up for it.
We're live now, accidentally.
Okay, that's worth it. All right, um, it's six o'clock and we will, what are we doing first? We are opening the meeting to open session to start off. So is anybody here for open session or want to bring anything up for ocean session?
Yeah, I just want to thank the select board for their explanation of the library roof because I think that explanation had a significant impact on the vote and approval of that roof.
Great, thanks. Yeah, we're thrilled that's moving forward overwhelmingly.
That's good.
Yeah.
First ever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, and you swore it would never happen. All right, so we, our next item is to go into executive session.
We need a motion for that, correct? Because we have to adjourn.
We have to read the language and then...
Yeah, it's a little private. Yep.
Um, I'll make the motion, so why don't you read it?
Yeah.
Uh, I move to, uh, uh, move the meeting into executive session pursuant to general laws. Chapter thirty A, section twenty one A, purpose number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contact, contract negotiations with non-union personnel. DPW teams contract also pursuant to general law, chapter thirty A, section twenty one A, purpose number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Police, New England Police Benevolent Association, Inc., Local zero nine two.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Jeff?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll unplug?
To the right, yep.
This one?
Yep. Uh, push the tab on the side.
Are we on emergency power now or are we on regular power?
I don't know.
I don't know.
All right, well, it's six thirty, so we're going to, uh, uh, open the meeting and we have, as usual, open session. Is anyone here for open session? No? None? Okay. All right, Ryan, want to start us off? Oh, yeah, sorry.
Not today.
No problem.
All right, so the first thing we have is, we've alluded to this several times, having it on the website. Just wanted to show a public presentation from Travis. Travis and I worked on this together. So this is the two thousand nineteen and twenty Haversen Road Maintenance Plan. So this is something we plan on publishing every year in March. Didn't have the time, the time on the job yet to do this, so we're doing it now, making it a more formal presentation, something that's accessible to the public so they can see it. And we'll be updating it annually every time there's a change in the FY plan for, in terms of chapter ninety. So the purpose of this is just to give public, the public and town officials, the official plan so they can see it, comment on it. When we create it, it'll be a public discussion, not necessarily... When we create it, it'll be a public discussion, not necessarily a dictated discussion, so people can weigh in and the board can decide how to expend these funds. We have eighty seven miles of road in town. For those, for those who didn't know, eighty of those are paved. There's no way with chapter ninety money, which is somewhere around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually, you could, you could fund all that. Roads do last a long time, but they break down. So this is the attempt to have a maintenance plan in place. As I told Travis, these, these plans need to be, need to be prioritized and need to be in place for ten to fifteen years, the type of impact you want. So this is our attempt to, to continue moving along those lines and to try and keep maintenance a priority. This year we received three hundred and fifty six thousand in chapter ninety money. So some considerations, we've got limited resources, so we're trying to put them in place correctly. Trying to focus on using chapter ninety money for road maintenance only. Road maintenance has been identified as something that is a priority in this town. Many small towns use chapter ninety money for other things like purchasing equipment. In many cases trying to fund their capital budgets. It's really designed to keep maintenance in place. And when you start using chapter ninety money for something else, you create longer term problems. So we're making every effort to adhere to that small town prioritization. Projects are clustered. You'll see that we're doing projects in certain areas. It's not because this area is necessarily, this road in this particular area is better than or needs it more than the other road, it's because it costs less when you cluster the projects. So you want your contractors to be doing things in one area so they don't have to move equipment around and lose time. The more you jump around from road to road, the more money it costs, the less impact you have and the less you're able to do. So sometimes you'll hear folks saying that, well this road isn't as bad as that road. It's, it's not necessarily a prioritization of roads, it's this area we're gonna focus on, this is the worst road and then some of the roads branching off it. We can save some money by, by working on those as well. And we reserve a small bit of chapter ninety money every year. As you know, money is appropriated at town meeting. You can't exceed costs, so you need to keep a little reserve just in case projects run over. This is the Route sixty eight construction project. It's a three part project. The first part is going on right now from the Rutland line to Brigham Street. Part two would be the north side of town from High Street, High Street to the Gardner line and then the third part is the Town Center project. This is all state money.
This isn't chapter ninety money.
This is not chapter ninety. So this particular reconstruction project, I'm trying to show how everything fits together with this road plan. So this is millions and millions of dollars. You rely on, on state money to fund the reconstruction of these state roads. You have to apply to, for grants on, on a tip grant and you need to have engineering costs in place and there's, there's a lot to it. So this, what's going on right now and should be completed by the end of the summer is a two inch milling fill with curbs and drainage reconstruction. Basically redoing the entire, the entire road, making it a drivable and strong surface with the type of drainage that allow it to last a long time. Phase two, so this is the north side. So we're doing the south side, then the north side. We just moved up to next year on this thanks to the advocacy of Travis at the, the MPO meetings, which is a big, big organization that regionally controls the way road projects, especially only state projects are funded. So this is going to be very similar to the project that's going on right now, a two inch milling fill with curbs and drainage reconstruction. So what you see now will likely and hopefully be mirrored next year on the north side of town.
And just one little caveat there. It says High Street to Gardner line, but that's not a hundred percent yet.
Correct. Right now it is.
High Street was the original, but as it relates to making sure that the, the Town Center project marries the northern portion of the project will determine whether or not that, that project, phase two moves maybe either from High Street to the rec fields or a little bit which side of the rec fields or whatnot. So it's a little bit of unknown still.
So the Town Center project, this is a very, very optimistic estimation of two thousand twenty. Really hoping to get onto the, the tip and sell this program as, as vital to the future of Hubbardston. So engineering costs were voted at town meeting for this, as everyone here knows, to reconstruct the road and the town center for everything, from multi-use lanes to sidewalks. The real idea for those who don't, who haven't been as fully involved in this, the public, is the idea of connectiveness. So the rec fields to the, to the town hall offices essentially or the schools is what you're talking about. The idea that people can use that space to walk, to ride. If you're at the rec field, maybe you wanna patronize the businesses in the town center or if you come to these great selectmen's meetings and maybe you wanna go out after. The idea of having that town center connected to everything makes it more appealing to potential businesses or potential development in those particular areas. Not necessarily saying that's gonna happen, but it makes that infrastructure in place for people to say, hey, I wanna come to Hubbardston and I wanna be a part of this.
And some of that has to do with, with Mass DOT too, right? They want to be part of that effort connectivity, which is sort of why we still don't know whether it would be until High Street or the rec fields 'cause they kinda wanna multi-use path that goes all the way to connect to a maybe a future senior center or a public safety building or both up in that area. So as far as a full, full connectivity, you can tell that, you know, when talking to them, that they, they get, they get more eager to advocate the more you sort of have that same mindset.
And just at town meeting, this was talked about a little bit, why do these costs change for the engineering? Why do these projects change? It's for that very reason. Also the north side, the, we're project two as we're calling it. The funding wasn't quite there to do all of it, so it starts this new conversation. So again, we're trying to connect all of these plans together to have basically this run from, from Rutland to Gardner.
And it's all pending if we get the strap grant also.
Not this.
I know, but um.
The strap is connected heavily to chapter ninety.
Yeah, like for um Flag Road, Hale Road, Williams Road, Mo Jeff and Cross.
That's probably coming next.
Which we'll get to. So the complete streets program, this is an effort by the state to fund these, these multi-use pedestrian friendly, bike friendly roads in, in small towns and, and big towns. Currently we have an approved project for a sidewalk from High Street to the Curtis Rec Field. It's just for the sidewalk. That's being discussed again now that that, that second part of the Route sixty eight project was, was pushed forward. Trying to move that potentially to Elm Street to help with the Hubbardston Center School and the reconstruction of that project. We just got the go-ahead from the state, that's something we can consider. So we have to have a larger conversation about what that does to the Town Center project, whether it should be moved and then the associated engineering costs. So that's to come.
Quick question, I mean, just for clarity, it says sidewalk and single. Is it only on one side or is it both sides that they're, the street that they're?
One side.
Was it one side?
For, for what?
In this particular.
Sidewalk from Main Street to Elm Street to Hubbardston School Center, as well as sidewalk from High Street to Curtis Recreation Field. Is that on one side of the street or is it both sides?
Just from, at this point, just from High Street to the rec field is one side, but the rest of it is two sides.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
So it's very specific and it's not a, it's a nice grant, we want it. It's not a lot of money, so it's limited in its scope.
And just, just for clarification, thank you.
So this is what Jamie was talking about, this, the strap grant, so the small town.
Road assistance.
Road assistance program, thank you.
Rural assistance.
Rural assistance. We got it all, well together, we got it together. So this is a grant that Travis and I are working on right now. It's one of our top priorities. Every three years you're invited to participate in this Mass Works Grant Program and these are for large projects. So the grant that, that Travis is working hard to get right now is for Flag Road and surrounding area projects. It's a one million dollar grant or three years worth of chapter ninety money. So these don't come along often. We're putting a lot of our effort into it, they do come along often, every three years, to try and improve this particular project. Otherwise you've gotta use chapter ninety money and there'll be a shuffling of, of projects in the area. So we got one three years ago, we're, we're working hard to get one this year because it's an important part of the overall plan.
And six years ago. So we were successful in thirteen, sixteen, each a million dollars to each one. So we're hoping that we uh get this one out.
One was old west, no, uh, old Westminster Road.
Well the, the last one was Old Westminster in that area. And then the one in thirteen was a million into that two and a half million dollar road reconstruction we did. So that was half the cost.
Got a phone call today talking about, you know, the safety of vehicles and stuff in that area. That's all part of the strap investment. So we're selling that idea, going up and taking pictures such as this, showing the shape of the road. This isn't even one of the worst sections.
So I, I, you know, if we don't get the grant, we, we've been talking about getting Flag Road fixed because of the business at the end and we've kind of waited, you know, we have a million, chance to get a million dollars to reconstruct it. I think as a board we have in the town, if we're not successful with that grant, I think we have to live up to our, our, our word to get Flag Road fixed, which might change our road plan a little bit. Cause that is, you know, that is a, a business at the end of that road that is suffering because of the condition of the road, so.
And as a.
Just something to think about.
Travis has been getting me up to speed on this. He's made that very clear. It's, the, the plan is very contingent on the Flag Road being part of the strap. Alright, so chapter ninety, what do you consider for chapter ninety? This is maximizing contractor costs by bundling projects. Fitting smaller roads into larger reconstruction networks. You saw some of the bigger projects. How do these, they're just as important, but, but smaller roads fit into the network. And a lot of these estimates don't include culvert work and police detail, which are all part of it. So culverts, for people who don't understand what a culvert is, is the way water moves under a road. So it's an important part to keep the water off the road so you don't have long-term destruction of the road. It's, it's difficult and detailed work. These are the scheduled projects right now. Bids were opened on these last week, so they're ready to go. New Westminster Road, it's about two hundred and ninety thousand for a three inch colden place. Adams Road's estimate a hundred and thirty nine thousand for a full depth reclamation on Adams Road and also full depth reclamation on Prentice. So what is, full depth reclamation is when you actually dig up the entire road and, and put essentially, keeping it simple, a new road down. Whereas the colden place, it mills up the road in particular and then falls behind by, by finishing off the road to keep it as simple as possible. Obviously more detail and science.
You're getting there.
I'm getting there.
So, so this total's four hundred and seventy five thousand dollars or something. We just talked about what we get for chapter ninety. How is the other money, uh, how is, how, how are we paying for the rest of this?
So this is money that is reserved year to year for chapter ninety, is then put back into the plan as you save money in previous years. So last year Travis was able to save some money on some of the projects and roll that into this chapter ninety for this year. And also road maintenance money that's part of the budget that's approved by the town is, is, is sometimes including this to make up the difference. And we're hoping that these estimates are on the higher side, so we can do that again next year. You don't wanna not have enough, but oftentimes you have a little bit left, which is good. So here's a visual of, of what's gonna be done this year, with new Westminster Road, New Westminster Road, Adams Road and Prentice Hill Road. There's a picture. Adams Road, this is some, um, some work they did earlier this spring to try and solve some of the pothole problems. Adams Road is, is in tough shape. And Prentice Hill Road. So a lot of people watch these presentations and I get emails and phone calls saying that their roads look very similar and we do know that. I did, as part of this whole plan, review all of the troubled roads in town. And I know that many of them look like this and we are trying to get them on a plan so people can have their expectations of when their road will be shown in these pictures. Twenty twenty, so this is next year. The, the plan includes Hybridge Road, Morgan Road, a lot of Morgan Road and Underwood Road. So full depth reclamation's for each and then.
Again, all clustered.
Yes, all clustered together. So crumb rubber application, which I learned a lot about, is essentially a preventative type of, of change. So we've heard in particular on Morgan Road that it might not need it, but it needs it enough where if you just did a twenty thousand dollar crumb rubber application, you'd get a lot more years out of it, so it's not part of it.
Didn't they do that in that section already?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So that's why some of the roads, uh, you, you know, folks might be thinking, oh, this road is okay, right? But it's getting to the point where it's deteriorating. If you just do a little bit of money now, it doesn't cost the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars later. And here is a visual of what's being proposed. This is Morgan Road.
It's pretty bad, but.
Yeah, it's a mess.
Let's take a quick look at Hybridge Road. We had someone come in from this area and talk about this. Travis did go up there and meet with the folks who live in that area, being very proactive with some of the complaints.
I don't know if there's any, but Morgan needs trees cut too. It's so, so narrow.
It looks like it.
Out of curiosity, uh, did, did you and Travis or did anyone happen to go out to Old Colony Road? That's.
That's a road I've not seen.
At Link sixty two and Old Princeton Road. And there's, there's a business at the end of that, which is it partly in Princeton, partly in Hubbardston as well? And, uh, it's almost an insult to call it a road. But Travis had mentioned, you know, one of the meetings recently, and I'm trying to remember exactly what he said about it, cause one, one of the big problems is it floods. Where the road is now below the water line, so that they'd have to build up something before they could even. I was just curious because it's, uh, it's equal to, if not more, than some of these two.
If I had a wand. And here's some ongoing ri- road maintenance projects. This is what the DPW works on. A lot of this stuff is contract work, stuff we bid out to, to third parties who can do it cheaper with, with a larger manpower. But the support for the road system i- is ongoing always, to include the plowing in the winter, but also dirt road grading, a lot of that going on right now. That's when they take materials from the side of the road or mix in extra materials and then grade the roads so that the, the water isn't causing as much damage as it wants to. Pothole repair, so Travis does the best he can to find, um, a, an adequate response time for people's concerns. Sa- safety is, is definitely a part of it and also how it fits into the overall work plan at the DPW. There's not unlimited workers there, but they do try and be very proactive when folks express concerns. Crack sealing, for anyone who's driven to Westminster, on New Westminster Road, you see those swiggly black lines that are in the road, that's crack sealing. So those cracks, if water gets in it, deteriorates the base of the road. So that crack sealing is something we do every year in order to prevent some of that from happening. It's a little preventative maintenance. And then line painting, it costs about thirty thousand dollars a year to, uh, to keep the lines painted, keep people safe. There's a picture of that crack sealing.
You guys, you guys self-perform that, Jamie? Crack sealing?
Excuse me?
Do you self-perform the crack sealing or do you guys sub that out?
They sub it out.
Yeah.
So some final considerations, while there's obviously much work to do, there's each DPW and Travis has a plan, trying to maximize those local revenues by bundling the projects and leveraging those larger projects. Connectivity is an important goal for us and the idea that this is a public plan, that people can access themselves or comment on, would, would love to, uh, see a update to this plan in public so that people can comment and bring their concerns and feel like they're being heard, updating this annually and presenting it before the construction season starts, before decisions are made.
So is this on the town website then?
It will be. Um, we are currently transitioning to the new website, so all of this will be on the new website. They just, they asked us to stop putting stuff on it so that they could accomplish the movement of the, um, of the things. So we asked to wait until town meeting to have that freeze, but we've been frozen the last week or so.
We'll take it live on Wednesday night.
And, uh, Ryan, on the, the grading of the, the dirt roads, um, does Travis ha- has plans of getting the millings from Route sixty eight?
They were doing that today.
Excuse me?
They got the millings today.
Okay, and so you're gonna use those on the dirt roads? Is that his plan?
Um, I don't wanna speak for which roads, but the plan is to add materials like that to, um, in projects where it's needed.
And that should be substantial savings for the town, hopefully, uh, hold up a little bit longer than the, than the dirt itself.
It is, and I wanna give, I wanna give Travis some credit. Um, they originally had said no to the millings and he just would not stop, would not calling me about it. He'd been so insistent that we get those millings from our roads to help other projects. That's a huge savings and it's, um, you know, something that wouldn't show up in a normal work plan.
Yeah, cause otherwise we'd have to be buying gravel and it's gonna be a, a great resource for the town to have those materials.
Are we a hundred percent on this year's upcoming chapter ninety funds?
Yes. You mean what we're receiving or the expenditure?
Yeah. Yeah, what we're receiving.
Yes, we got a letter from the state.
Yeah.
That's, uh, that's the report. So this is gonna hopefully become an annual thing. And, um, if anyone would like to talk about it more with me, talking to the public here, not you, please feel free.
Yeah. Okay, sounds good.
Thanks for in.
Yeah, good start.
Quick question. Uh, I saw nineteen and twenty. Is there a twenty one, twenty two?
So right now we're at two years. Uh, our.
Fine.
So that should be explained. It's a big question. Our GPW director inherited a plan and has been working to, to edit it and adjust it as, as he works through the town and, and the resources process. So, um, I, I would like to see it out further, but it's really hard to project this type of thing more than two, three years.
Put Lombard on, on there, on twenty.
Right, I, you couldn't, couldn't make it through the whole thing without saying that, huh?
I've driven that, it's, it needs work.
Yeah, I think, if, if I may, you bring up a very good point. The gentleman here have, obviously, uh, an audience here and, and somebody who's really listening. I've, I've been in towns and I've been in cities where, uh, there's feedback. I.e. you have a pothole that is serious enough, there's a way to, to, to report it. Uh, is there such a mechanism here other than calling the DPW? Like for example, is there an online capability for somebody to just report potholes or report li- you know, issues like that? Uh, I'm, I'm just asking the question, just, I'm trying to understand, how the cities and towns have that integrated with the website? I know that you're working on a new website, maybe something, something to consider.
If you, uh, go to my whiteboard, you'll see, report a problem is right on there.
Checked.
Should be something you can do online. Not everybody does things online, so we wanna have multiple avenues for people to.
Perfect. Thank you for. Perfect, thank you for clarifying.
Express concern, complaint.
No, 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 that's that's exactly what that is.
Okay, roads. Roads?
Is it?
Okay. Um.
Oh, we could u- I'm sorry, t- in order to submit the strap grant, we need the t- uh the board to consider allowing us to send that grant forward. Uh formal vote helps with the application to support applying for the one million dollars strap grant for Flag Road and surrounding areas. So I'm asking if you support that.
Well, I'll make a motion to support the uh strap grant for two thousand nineteen.
I'll second that.
Discussion, on favor? Yes. Yes.
We'll get that in in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, uh so the next item is Memorial Day.
This is mine, I asked uh Travis to put this on, um w- as most of you know, and and Pat and I were involved, we we actually were in the parade this year. We had a very successful uh Memorial Day parade, both in terms of turnout for the town as well as participants. And um when I was marching in the parade with Tom Collier, happened to be right in the front as we were going through, he just kind of was talking to me and and he says, it's a shame the flag is not being shown here. And uh and when I was looking, I said, yeah, all the poles are occupied right now. And I said, I guess there aren't any more brackets, but I said, I'll, he said, it's a shame, and I said, well, I'll have to see what I can do about that. So what I'm proposing and hope you guys will go along with it, is I would like to see it be a practice in the town, that we uh exhibit the flag, for example, especially on Memorial Day, but Veterans Day. And maybe if it were Memorial Day, carry it over through Flag Day, which has almost lost its significance, I think. Um if any expense at all, it might be the addition of some more brackets for the poles, because everything is occupied. And it's, I don't think it's unusual, because of most towns do have that and.
It was the first year we didn't.
Yeah, and I I received a lot of comments from people wondering why they weren't.
So I'm proposing that, you know, we make it a practice, that we do observe it uh Memorial Day, Veterans Day, and Flag Day.
I I I a hundred percent agree, I think before we make a motion or something like that, maybe we should just talk to Katie, cause she, maybe it was just an oversight this year.
Mm-hmm.
Because the brackets are all, I think, on top of where the other big flags are hanging down, so.
Well, there are extra brackets, okay.
Oh, no, they're on the the poles, so you might wanna talk to, you might wanna talk to Katie and just um.
Yeah, they're on.
Okay.
Put everything in the right spot.
Put everything in the right spot, I think it may have just been an oversight, I don't have any firsthand information on that, but.
I I did talk to Katie about it, it wasn't a this or that, it was it, but I believe a a miscommunication as to as to how they get up there.
Yeah.
How the.
They usually fire me, fire department does it.
What is the fire department doing? Uh I think it was a coordination issue and I'm a big fan of the flag, so.
Mm-hmm.
Take personal.
As I am too.
Take personal uh responsibility for that and it should be something that's coordinated tomorrow.
Yeah, I think we just coordinate it better next year.
Okay. Okay, okay.
I do like the fact that Katie's like having all these nice flags up with companies on them throughout the year for different events, so that's a.
Well, I wasn't taking anything away from that, I just I I just like.
Yeah, I know, but there's, there are flag brackets on those poles.
Mm-hmm. Glad you brought it up.
Yeah, it's good.
Um, okay, we're not quite at seven, so we jump around a little bit, do a couple of items before we get to the poll hearing?
Sure.
Okay. Um, do you wanna go to eight, the mortgage subordination now?
I do.
Okay.
That might be more than five minutes. You have a gold position at seven, that's your option.
Okay.
All right, you wanna bite off a couple others then?
Wage authorization, do those go first?
We have uh in your packets, move wage authorizations for DPW seasonal workers. The three we have is Matthew O'Brien, James Payson, and Dennis.
They're in the back of your book.
This one.
So they were able to fill all the positions, cause I saw that sign up there for a awful long time, you know, working for people.
It was difficult this year to fill those seasonal vacancies.
Kids progress tonight.
Yeah.
They're super important, it's impossible for DPW to keep up with all of the mowing, so and the road work, so one would have to give.
You have one that has resigned, Dennis, the first one that you see, he had resigned from the position, however, he did work a few days, so that's why we need a wage authorization for him. James is the one that was hired and presided him.
I think, so you're ju- we're just looking for authorization?
Well, so these are no waiver of notification.
Waiver of notification.
So I'll make a motion to waive the notification period for the three employees as estimated.
I'll second that. Discussion, on favor?
Yes.
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 I will say the DPW should have some extra time, because they're not um spending all the time sweeping. Cause of the salt? That was a huge drain every spring.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's nice not having loads of sand around the shed.
Yeah.
I will give you an update on number fifteen on the open meeting law complaint, we continue to wait for the uh for the AG's office to give us some type of report. Check in occasionally with Carolyn at AP Law and um they've told me many times now and very specifically that we're waiting for the AG, so.
Okay.
Been too long, I think, we should have had.
Yeah, it's been so long.
It's like two minutes?
Selectment meeting schedule? Go with that?
Yeah, it's in your packet, let's put that again. The proposed dates.
I think we're gonna have to get back to you on this one, after we check our schedules and see. About holidays and vacations and stuff like that?
August sixth is that one that's gold, cause both myself and Ryan will not be here on that date, however.
I I can make it back for that. I've planned on taking time.
This is military service?
No, this is, the twentieth would be military service, as is scheduled now.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Twentieth of August?
Yes. It would be an annual training during the twentieth. The.
We're no good without Lori and Ryan, so.
So I I think we could just cancel August sixth, if something comes up in the next couple of weeks that makes us need to put it back on, we'll just put it back on, but the summer typically is a slower time anyway. After we've dealt with budgets and town meeting and all that other stuff, so I should just might as well cancel it right now.
Okay.
But the the July ones are specific, we just wanna get those scheduled and and set up, if those dates work, uh if you have to check schedules, that's fine.
Fine with me. Can I see this?
I'm good with July.
I think it looks good with the whole Christmas area.
I'm okay. Mm-hmm.
I mean, we can do July at least the next one, we can plan for the next one on July ninth, if you guys are gonna be here, and then we can, you can review the meeting until then, and then we can just post them through there, if that's what you wanna do.
Yeah, just, I think, I'd say just leave it, leave them, leave them for now.
Mm-hmm.
It's gonna be a fun year.
All right, I think we have hit uh seven o'clock on my phone anyway, so um we have a old hearing. You wanna come on up?
Hi.
Hello again. So, you want me to read this thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's okay, so we have a notice of of butters, it's June, dated June fourth, two thousand eighteen. To all interested parties, in conformity with the requirements of section twenty-two of chapter one sixty-six of the general laws, to Ed, you are hereby notified that a public hearing will be held at the office of the Board of Selectmen, seven Main Street, Unit Three, Slade Building, of the town of Hubbardston, Massachusetts, on Monday, June eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, at seven P M, upon petition of National Grid and Verizon New England Inc. Permission to erect or construct and allocation for a line of wires, poles, and such other fixtures as may be necessary to sustain or protect the wires of the line for the transmission of electricity upon, along, across, or under the following public ways of said town. Bemis Road, National Grid to install one J O pole, what's a J O?
Joiny home by the home company.
Joiny home pole, I think I asked the same thing last time. An anchor on Bemis Road, National Grid to install pole, down guy, and anchor with uh and anchor with an eight-foot lead across pole twenty-three, Bemis Road. Pole and anchor will be located on town property on the south side of Bemis Road, pole will be labeled twenty-three dash eighty-four, location approximately as shown on plan attached. Wherefore it prays that after due notice and hearing, as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with marked Bemis Road, Hubbardston, Massachusetts, number two six two seven three three oh three, May twenty-second, two thousand eighteen. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings, as each of the petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioner agrees to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on each s- uh on each of said poles for the fire, police telephone and telegraph, telegraph signal wires uh belonging to the municipality and used by exclusively for municipal uh purposes. So, okay?
Okay, do you guys have these pictures?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great, um those two existing poles are anchored by trees and um National Grid inspectors.
Which two again, sorry?
Um on Bemis Street pole, or Bemis Road, pole twenty-three.
Yep.
And New Westminster Road, pole sixty. Those are, those are anchored by trees.
Do we have a second?
I don't have that.
We just have Bemis. I know, but we just have Bemis for tonight's.
You don't have?
We have nothing on New Westminster.
Mm-mm, I only got the one.
Okay. It's the same. I guess we can't talk about that one then, okay, okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so this pole, twenty-three, it has a tree anchor, that's what ho- is holding the pole steady. And our inspectors want to bring it up to standards. So, in order to bring it up to standards and support that pole, they're putting a stub pole across the street. That wa- that um wire will be a guy, a pole-to-pole guy span, anchoring it, and then the stub pole will be anchored with the down guy in the back. But they need to be brought up to code.
How high does that wire go?
The.
Across the street?
Well, it's a, it's definitely meets all the requirements.
Mm-hmm.
I know we have to keep our lines eight, at least eighteen and a half feet up. It says, in order to avoid a situation where, in a strong storm, damage to the tree causes the guy wire to pull the pole over or down. We want to remove the tree guys and install stub poles, which are more reliable.
Mm-hmm. Anyone have any questions?
I don't.
No, comments on this?
I don't think there's any comments from the crowd either.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so, this is a public hearing.
All right, so I'll make a motion to uh approve the poll petition as presented.
Second motion.
Discussion, on favor?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Sorry, I have to come back.
That's okay.
So Lori, you you don't have any from New Westminster?
No, I only got the one, sorry.
That's okay, I I don't know who dropped the ball on our end, but yeah, I'll see you again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Okay.
Here's your signatures on this, all of you can sign, there's just one line short, so you'll have to fill in.
All, you want all of us?
It's for the full, it, yeah, on the lines, on the right, it's for the full petition.
So next up, we had a request for um Mister James Largie, so this is a mortgage subordination, so at some point in the past, the uh town of Hubbardston uh agreed to get back a better term, subsidize the mortgage of this gentleman through a grant, it was a regional planning grant, CMPRC. I had many calls into them, they haven't called me back, but the particular person is in in charge of it, but this was done a while ago. Did some more research and found out that this mortgage has been subordinated in the past, so for for those unfamiliar who are watching, it's basically the first person to pay, get paid back if something happens, so when you sub- subordinate your mortgage, you're saying we'll get paid um second or third or fourth or last. So right now Hubbardston is second in line, if this gentleman um for for some reason is unable to to pay off this particular thing or some damages are are found. So uh he's asking that uh a refinance be done, this is through First Internet Bank. You have a copy of the letter that uh First Internet Bank sent on behalf of this gentleman. It is asking that the board support subordinating themselves again, to be third in line. The reason for the request, I did a lot of phone calls with her to try and to try and get this detailed, reason for the request is this helps the resident out in terms of uh refinancing to alleviate some debt and to be able to pay off um some of the obligations that he has. It's sort of a a different type of request, I'm not sure if anyone was on the board when this was done in the past.
When I first got on the board a while ago, we did a lot of these, it seems like every week we were subordinating mortgages.
I don't remember doing one.
Uh because I think that the grant program was at the time active and people were getting money for septic repairs and everything else like that. They can get money from, basically came from the CMRPC um through the town and we ended up getting paid back, but it's been years and years since I remember seeing one of these.
So uh this was brought to our attention about a month ago and I've been doing as much digging as I can do to get some information on you, but that that letter essentially sums up the our conversation, so why is this being brought to the board, what what does the board need to consider, why would they even consider doing this?
So Ryan, why why would we go to third position, if we were second position? If we were second position before and all he's doing is refinancing, the original mortgage is paid off and then the new refinanced mortgage, should we should still stay second position, right?
So this, this refinancing bank is taking on whatever portion of the loan, um they won't do it unless it's subordinated again. So they're saying that they won't, they won't do this for this gentleman if if the mortgage isn't subordinated again.
Ed, you wanna add to this?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, what's the amount is that we're, the town is subordinating?
It is. Forty-five thousand is sticking in my mind, forty-three thousand.
Forty-three thousand.
Forty-three.
Is, was that for the septic system?
Must have been, hmm. It must.
Has any of that been at all paid back, or is that still pending completely in the, pull them up?
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna pretend to know that, we've been trying to get an answer from whoever it is, I I'm not sure.
They usually get paid back at the, again, this is, it's been years since I remember coming across these, but it's, they usually get paid back when the house was sold. Cause it says it was, it was.
This is a, this is a loan to be paid back upon the sale of that.
From what I understand, it it's a grant that was given us and then loaned, it's not really town money.
It's not town tax money, it was basically federal money given to all the surrounding towns to hand out to homeowners, they had to fit certain financial criteria that, you know, they had a s- specific defect in the house that they could not afford to replace on their own.
Mm-hmm.
And then if we got the m- money back, do we pay the federal government back for that?
It's one of my questions that I have pending is, uh even if we got the money back, I'm I'm not sure it's ours, so we'd have to give it back.
Not sure it's ours.
Then the other question would be, is is are there any interests that were due at the time you were coming on with that, I'm assuming there must be or may not be, depending on the circumstances, right?
I mean, it is recorded and and leaned, so.
Yeah, okay, okay, so it's public explanation, I'll just leave it. I think to follow up to Michael's question, I'm s- I know I'm continuing here, but to follow up to Frank's question, uh or just insist on an answer to Michael's question, and that is is that why does this become a third s- uh what, why does this? The way I see this here, you would be subordinating and s- and going back to the same position as you were before, meaning you would be second in line, not third in line.
Right, cause you're just, you're getting rid of the original mortgage and then refinancing.
Exactly, so I'm kinda confused about that too.
Tom?
Can I be of help on that?
Well, let me go, Tom has his hand up first.
It depends on if you are getting rid of the original mortgage.
Right.
Cause banks come first.
Right.
Bank A was there, now Bank B is introducing himself, he wants to be second and you're pushed up there.
But if you're refinancing, you're you're getting, I would think you're getting rid of the, you're rid of A.
Rid of A.
I'd love it to bank.
Ed?
Yeah, I I think what what, I don't certainly know, but I think what can happen is maybe they're, the bank is only refinancing a portion of it.
Portion.
So therefore you still have the original bank in line and then a portion of it being taken by the second bank and that would push us to put it.
Tom?
The other thing is if the, if the money was given to the homeowner for a purpose, and we're kind of assuming it was a septic system, I don't know that, but assuming that's correct. You wanna assure that the septic system was done and approved and the money is. assuming that's correct, you wanna assure that the septic system was done and approved and the money is in the ground successfully before you approve the
That's, that's an excellent point.
I'm hesitant to, I only know what I know here, but what I believe is, is it's cash out refinance for the purposes of paying off some debt. So, it would be mortgage, then this, this cash out and then plus.
May, can we maybe t- table this for right now and?
I, I think we have to.
Or do we have to do, do they want it?
No, no, I have to table it, I mean.
Yeah, just maybe find more information about what, what position we're gonna be, why, things like that. And, and so we can make a better decision.
And, and, you know, uh, we understand uh, that interest rates fluctuate, so we're, we're not kicking this way down the road, but, you know, for the next time that we meet, maybe we can have some more information on it.
Yeah, and it's, it's been, trying to get that, that info to you has been difficult.
Sure. Sure. Okay.
When we first got this, it was assumed that we knew everything about it and we were almost affronted that we were asking questions, so trying to dig and dig to, to figure it out, so we'll do more digging.
Okay.
Something sticks in my head that they had to show proof to MRPC of work done before the lean went.
That makes sense.
So, it's been a lot of years, yeah.
It's probably the Board of Health. That info would be at the Board of Health.
Probably the Board of Health, yeah. I mean, that, that would be turned in before the, the lean was approved or whatever was done.
Okay, so we did the meeting schedule. This would be Building Department Structures next.
We, we've had, um, as you know, we've been discussing many different parts of the, the Building Department and uh, at a previous previous report of mine too, I asked that you consider what values are what we want out of the Building Department. So, here's what we've been doing. The, we got a grant through Brian. Brian got us a grant to uh, study the regionalization effect of, of going with Gardner. So, if we joined Gardner's Inspectional Services, what that would look like, what it would cost, uh, what that regionalization would mean for both the city and us. Also have had um, some entry discussions with the Town of Berry. They have a four-town arrangement where uh, they share services of a building inspector and staff. Uh, it's fairly new, but I've been talking to Andrew, who's the town administrator there, about what it would look like out of fifth town to that and add more. What, what towns do they have yours? Do you know?
I don't have to tell them.
I was actually at this last Q E M P public, whatever you wanna call it, the table I was sitting at was, they sort of grouped people in with what your like interests would be. Mine was from a municipal standpoint, regionalization, that sort of thing. I sat there and discussed this with the, one of the select board members from Berry. How it's sort of this fledgling program uh, that they're so- still trying to figure out. Um, and, and um, you know, it seems like something to pursue anyway.
So, I also talked with uh, Nina Zarian in Princeton. So, Princeton right now shares with us Rich. Rich Brady is their longtime building inspector, commissioner. Uh, we are taking some of his services now, so we're in the same spot. He's, he's retiring sometime in, in early September and they are in the same position. So, do we hire someone for ourselves? Do we regionalize? Do we go for the big regionalization software with Gardner? So, um, we will bring you options in, in the next month in terms of what all of that would look like. But I would like from you, sort of what, what you want out of the Building Department, what, what you think we need so that I can structure some of these conversations. And here's just some entry, just, just to start the conversation. Zoning enforcement has been something that I've discussed at every meeting I've been at so far. So, in, in every conversation I've talked about zoning. So, it might be difficult for Gardner inspectors. Like the professionalism of the inspection services and the, the efficiency, I think, in Gardner would be great, but I don't know how much zoning we would get, especially from the enforcement. In an arrangement with just a Princeton, we would have some control over uh, how much time we spent. It just depends on, um, is five hours enough? Is three hours enough? How do we direct the building inspector? In that larger organization, they haven't considered uh, in the Berry-led, and I'm calling it Berry-led, but it's not, it's a four-town. They also have problems with zoning and have said maybe we could use this as an opportunity to discuss that. So, I know zoning is just one part of building inspection.
Con- convenience is a big one. That is brought up a lot as far as what sort of level of effort people have to do to get and where they have to go and that sort of thing. So, convenience is, is, and customer service is, which is, you know, sort of the business we're in is a, is a big concern.
So, um, I'm just looking for some feedback from the board on, on what we want. Cause we can do anything we want. There's a cost to everything. We can have our own building inspector if, if that's something we want and, and we'll figure out how to structure it and do it. Um, but just curious, having been in the town a long time and, and seeing its direction, um, what do you want us to look for? What, any options you get? And we'll try and give you a few.
How many hours a week did Larry put in?
Nineteen. Actually, he might have, even if twenty had benefited.
But, yeah, I just sort of, I don't think this, you can't really have m- much better of an opportunity to have all these different towns around us with options as far as regionalization, so. I mean, we talk about it all the time, preaching regionalization, how that's, you know, something we wanna per- pursue, so I, I don't know. I, I'd be, I'd be all for looking into that hard.
It's great if there's a cost savings.
Yeah.
I mean, if he's just working nineteen hours a week here, um, a part-time inspector, but what's the cost savings?
Right, if there's no benefits too, there's a significant savings there.
And we, like you said, we wanna have customer service. You don't want someone being discouraged, you can't get a permit, you know, delaying projects, somebody you want, you wanna.
Yes, right.
Well, but that could also be covered by the secretary. If we did regionalize with Princeton and then you still had this regular hours, I don't know if the secretary would uh, just hand out the. That's part. But actually, we wanted to go online with a lot of the process.
Hmm.
That's something we're looking at across the board, but this is a great opportunity to do that here.
Yeah, it is.
Well, well, I mean, Larry was building inspector for a couple towns, so it's not like he was just ours. So, I don't see the difference between a, with arrangement with a Princeton inspector or a Berry inspector or a Gardner inspector because Larry wasn't full-time here either.
The only thing, I guess, part of the discussion that we can't have is whether or not because it was Groton and here, you weren't gonna have necessarily uh, a single office that somebody was gonna be able to go to for permits. Here, we could have that option, whereas whether they come here, whether they go to Princeton, you've got the single administratives, um, that's ten minutes away from each other.
So, what Larry did was he had um, four hours a week that he was public. They call public hours where he was just there. Sometimes he would schedule inspections during that, um, but tho- those were hours he was available to public. The way Rich structures himself, he does two and a half hours a week public where uh, Patty works to put all of his meetings into one spot and then he gets paid per inspection. Um, and we're trying to figure out legally whether or not getting paid for inspection is the same as doing hours, because then you could do both. Or you could have, say, fifteen hours a week and then thirty dollars per inspection or whatever the cost is gonna be and not exceed that benefit threshold, but that's unclear in H R serves. So, it's, do we wanna have public hours? How many days of public hours we wanna be available to public? Or does public hours exist, like having Patty sitting there and coordinating meetings that can happen in Gardner? Or does it have to be planned review? So, these are all different versions that people are doing and it's different everywhere. I've been learning a ton about it.
Hmm.
But I, I agree, zoning enforcement, I think, is key. We, we've haven't, we've been, haven't been successful with that over the, the years, so. And I think there was some talk about if we went with Gardner too, there was a hearing officer there that we would have access to.
Hearing officer, yeah.
Yeah.
Whereas some of the other situations, we would not.
Right. Unfortunately, with Gardner anyway.
That wasn't included in the, the study they did. Um, I was kind of upset about that, cause it was one of the key elements of we've been talking about. So, I asked them to relook at it and, and add more information, but.
And we have until October.
Yes, or we're gonna be in another interim situation, which we're trying to avoid.
Right.
So, we do have the permits online, downloadable forms. So, once that's, if we have those o- offer, hours like Larry did, or if, if they just handed it in to the secretary or mailed it in. So, the part-time hours like Larry did would work or, or um, you know, if you regionalize with another town, like you said, it doesn't really matter as long as someone's there.
The process it? Ed?
I think, you know, from, uh, from my memory, uh, all of our zoning enforcement was basically, uh, if someone called and said I th- I think this is a zoning problem or needs enforcement, then Larry would look into it. We've never had, we're so small a town, we've never had someone who rode around and looked for zoning violations and things like that. So, I think that, you know, certainly when, when you need the communication of the public being able to say, you know, my neighbor, you know, I think has a zoning violation, then be able to, be able to address it and look into it. But, you know, I don't think we can afford someone who rides around and looks to see whether se- someone has a, you know, two unregistered vehicles in there.
I think that's, that's bad policy too to do that. That's, yeah.
Yeah, just too small a town for that.
Well, that, we, we.
But we have to have a vehicle so the public can at least be heard as to if, if there is a possible problem, then somebody at least can take corrective action.
I mean, my, my, some of my concern with zoning enforcement going forward is, I mean, we have possible, not that there's any on the plate, but marijuana stuff with the new zoning laws and solar stuff. I mean, as this stuff grows, you know, you really wonder if you need.
Literally.
Literally. Yeah, you really wonder if you need a bigger, more, you know, robust department like Gardner who will have a hearing officer. I mean, I think some of the dog kennel case, I mean, look how long that went on. If we had a hearing officer, we didn't have to go to court and all this other kinda stuff, that may save quite a bit of money. So, something to think about.
Well, so, a few, few years ago.
But I agree, Ed, I agree.
With, with Anita, um, I, I don't think we had a open, I think it was just like a meeting I had with her or something. We used to meet every other, every month, Friday mornings. But anyway, um, there was this discussion of, okay, how do you, how do you start? Where do you start, right? Do you, do you have a list or, um, so what we had talked about, and it didn't really go anywhere, cause we've been through four town administrators since then, right? But uh, was having uh, municipal departments, um, all sort of contribute to the effort of any sort of known, um, zoning enforcement issues and sort of bringing it together like that. Uh, a- and it's, again, it's not like, you know, um, necessarily uh, hard and fast, but it's, it's at least a way to start. So, that was, we ta- you even talked about doing it, I don't, you guys must have um, inter-municipal, um, uh, department head meetings and stuff. It, 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 happening during, you know, one of those meetings or something or not, where a, an agenda item has to do with zoning enforcement, that may have to do with um, you know, outstanding taxes or, you know, I don't know, um, we're just sort of spitballing, but that's what we talked about a couple of years ago.
But didn't we, we didn't have a little, little committee too?
That was even before that, yeah.
Yeah, that we talked about, cause um, g- cause I think to your point, Ed, and, and Mike, I happen to agree also because I think uh, some of the violations et cetera that have pa- piled up over the years, uh, certainly been brought forth several, he was trying to throw on, on John. I think part of it, part of the problem is on the town, because it has not been enforcing things. So, in one sense, you're feeding it, because if you have that reputation that we're not enforcing, then you pass that right on to the individuals who are gonna say, well, what, there's nothing I have to worry about anyway. So, I think we need to do, have something in place or try to get something in place, or whether it's still regionalizing to, to, to turn that around.
So, I think you're getting the feedback you were looking for, right? One of the priorities as far as the Building Department and zoning and all that sort of is concerned from our standpoint, and I, I think it's pretty clear.
So, if we scheduled, if we scheduled hours for zoning enforcement, with the way I would see it structured from an administration standpoint is uh, this building inspector or commissioner would be evaluated on their follow-through. So, do they send a letter every time there's a complaint? Do they do their investigation? Do they follow through when necessary to make that enforcement mechanism? But in order for that to work, it has to be a culture change, like everybody has to be on board with that. Um, and it'd be a significant investment of time. So, one, one go at Gardner Court might take up, you know, the entire two weeks of the building inspector's time because of the hours involved in zoning.
Mm-hmm.
But.
You can, yeah, pick your battles, right?
Right, so. I guess if we're gonna invest that way, I just wanted to see if that's something that we wanna do for culture. I, I agree, you don't wanna go like looking at everyone's pool, but maybe if you knew that, you know, you're gonna get a letter if you're building something that you shouldn't be building,
Mm-hmm.
it, it might send a message that, you know, there would be a consequence.
Yeah.
Something like, I would have a concern with this house that's like in the process of crumbling, half-falling down and there's just nothing happening, you know, taxes aren't paid or just, there's no uh, lack, there's lack of concern, you know. Nobody cares that a house is half-fallen down and.
Because there's no, no one, nothing's gonna happen to them, right?
You know, you tear it down, you know, go after, like places like that, I would uh, think if you clean it up.
We're gonna send him to your house first, right in the backyard.
Tom?
Uh, there was a ticket mechanism?
Yeah, that's what this is.
Yeah, I mean, I, I haven't heard the word ticket until I just said it. Are we gonna hand out some tickets? And then I thought the town kinda got out of the problem or out of the interfacing of the problem and it moved to a court magistrate.
So, that's what I've been investigating, um, sorry to jump in, I've.
Yeah.
I've been investigating whether or not, like, what's legal there. So, I agree that, that, that the simplest thing is the ticket mechanism, so can you do that? And then what I wanna figure out is what happens next and what's the, what's the investment? So, do you have to send your town council to the magistrate to argue for it? Can I go? Can Patty go? Can the building inspector go? Cause all those different structures and elements would, would be a cost change, right? So, if it's just anybody I can send there, then, then of course we can push that all the way through. But if we're gonna send town council, it's gonna be a cost benefit of, of three hundred dollars an hour, let's say, or five hundred dollars an hour. What are we gonna get? So, that, that's definitely part of this.
Not just financial.
Correct. It's not, but there is a limit to what you can spend.
Okay.
Ed?
I also just wanna put forth the word caution. The fact that the town has not had a formal process
Hmm.
means that from an enforceability perspective, any past items and issues that have been brought up may be potentially subject to litigation. And you may therefore, as you formalize the process, which I think is an absolute must, you may have to at some point in time wipe the slate clean and start fresh. Because otherwise the town will be uh, subjecting itself potentially, uh, in a manner that it has not had a consistent enforcement approach or even a way in which it has been able to have the folks who are subject to such enforcement be able to uh, counter or, or present their case.
I think that.
And I'm just pre- I'm just presenting this here as something that I myself as a citizen uh, would be very concerned about.
I think, um, I, I hear ya, and I, I think there's gotta be some level of that, but I don't know that you can just do that, because you need to have jurisdiction over certain, you know, departments, right, and, and all that.
I think he's speculating. I'm with that, and that's okay.
Sure.
I, I'm absolutely speculating and I'm just simply saying that there has been enough cases in towns where I have been where if you do not have a consistent policy with regards to how do you go about enforcing this here?
Mm-hmm.
Or even a way in which you have potential hearings, that for all intents and purposes, you're jeopardizing any past processes. I think therefore the formalization of the process is very instrumental in terms of moving forward.
Yeah, no question.
But there you, for you have to potentially look at the past and see what you do about that. And as I said, in some cases, towns have simply said we're, 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 we're cleaning our slate and we're starting fresh from here.
It's, uh, the, throwing out a question here, cause I certainly don't know. Is it, uh, do they have statute of limitations on these things? Is that something that you're s- you're alluding to?
I cannot tell you, I cannot tell you about that, but I certainly cer- that is certainly something that you miss, must consider here too.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, well.
So, the, the plan moving forward is uh, continuing to investigate these things and quickly, cause we need to act uh, this summer. And the options will include some of these comments you've given me and, and you sort of get, you know, two or three options.
Okay.
This, this heavy zoning, this isn't, this is what this costs. We'll be looking to, to get some support on the decision so we can move forward.
And I think the big thing we're gonna have to see too is, is look at this costs versus what it used to cost.
Yes.
Not just compared to two or three others, right? So, just the, so we can have a, a full sort of view of that.
And there'll be a weighing too, like this is a lot cheaper, but you won't get X, Y, and Z.
Yeah. Sure.
This is expensive, but you do get this. What, what are we willing?
Okay. Okay. Good. Uh, moving on that, uh, you have the Mass Works Strap Grant listed next.
He already did that.
And now, so you're up. Town administrator report.
Alright, so.
Please read the first one complete.
I will. Here it is. I'm officially entering the Twenty-first Annual Hubbardston Library Five K on Saturday, September eighth, and I plan to win it.
I'm gonna run, you're not gonna.
I will chip you in. I will run, I will be in it as well. For the, I think. So, if people are willing to
Fourteenth year round.
Come out and support the library and it's, it's amazing efforts, uh, the cost is twenty-two dollars if you sign up before August uh, second. It's twenty-five after, so you save a couple bucks. This is always a well-attended event from what I hear.
And you're guaranteed a long-sleeve shirt too, if you get in there early.
Yes.
So, within that certain amount.
Guaranteed a shirt. So, we will be posting this on the website in support of the library. It's already on the library's website, uh, for signing up. And uh, I told them that I would be one of the first to enter, so I'm pretty close, but that's something that, that you truly wanna support, unless you get a little workout in, so that's good.
Like Avery's gonna beat him?
She's got pretty fast legs.
I run like a twenty-seven minute five days. Alright, next up is the two thousand eighteen annual report. Laurie's.
You gonna do it in your pack?
Sure.
If you win it then, that's pretty impressive.
Yeah.
Let me just finish.
Yeah.
The uh, two thousand annual report, Laurie's favorite document of all time. I can't even tell you how much effort she put into this and how, how difficulties are to compile, to get everyone to submit on time, including myself.
And me.
But this is a really important document that uh, that people reference for years and years to come. Um, we go back and still look at some of these old ones to figure out what happened in the past. So, these are available now. Uh, but this is a really important document that uh that people reference for years and years to come. Um, we go back and still look at some of these old ones to figure out what happened in the past, so these are available now at the town offices at the library, or they can contact us and we will get them one, whether we drop one off or mail it, we'll make sure that everyone who who can't or wants one of these uh gets one. So. It's available.
Alright, great, thanks guys, thanks Lori.
Next year I'm ready, I got this.
Alright, so there's nothing to vote on here, uh, but this is, I believe I sent you a copy, but
Yeah.
but this is our uh first attempt at an organizational chart. So this is based off of um town charter, town bylaws, trying to show the the relationships and the connections. So some things that people don't know, the the library trustees by charter is in charge of their own uh budget and employees, uh except for the library assistants, which I which I have some say in. Uh, the Board of Health is obviously elected board, so is the Board of Assessors, uh, but I tend to help organize and run staff. So we have twenty-one employees, forty-five part-time, to include our call firefighters. And just every person out there you can imagine, I think I think it's interesting to see these visually, and we'll continue to update it and make sure that it's accurate. Um, some of this changed at town meeting, we added a planning board clerk, um, and other updates that need to be made, so it's it's a continually updated document.
Will it be on the website?
It will, yeah. So we also, that's the um Board of Selectmen jurisdiction. And then we have another visual, this is our elected and appointed organizational chart, so our boards and committees, so elected boards are.
Lori, can you blow that one up too?
Thanks. Elected boards are on the the left, and then we have our appointed boards on the right. So i- for this particular meeting, just wanted to call your attention that there are some appointed boards that may or may not still be necessary, or that you may wanna, we may be can bringing up to you and considering whether or not we want to continue them. Um, or of course, there's always the option to add further appointed boards, and we will be making a big push now the town meeting and the election is over to try and fill some of our vacancies.
I could bring something up, uh, I don't know if you guys remember, uh, Brian brought this up when we were talking about uh similar things, and he just co- made the comment that he thought we as a town, the size town, we had had too many elected. We didn't need that many elected, and he thought maybe we should take another look at things and reconsider and maybe make fewer things. As it is, you know, we don't get people running for the offices. So that uh, that was his observation, that he he hadn't, in in the towns that he'd worked in, he'd never seen so many elected positions.
Well, we went through that exercise, and that's a long ago, when we were doing charter.
Town clerk.
And and there was uh, I think there was a survey done on that in the town as to people still wanting, and there was feedback from the town as to whether positions should be changed from elected to appointed.
Right. Because again, my point being, if it's not, if we, let's say something is not an elected board, it gives us then the opportunity to perhaps seek someone and, you know, if they would know that they're not gonna be tied down for one year, two years, three years, but app- get them appointed, we might be able to get some people on some of these uh boards that uh no one runs at for, et cetera.
I think people are just afraid to put themselves out there, right? I mean, how was this turned out at the town meeting for a while?
Yeah. It's the same sense, what's the sense of having a, calling an election for it, and nobody shows, nobody runs for it.
So the the open houses are our first attempt to try and get some coordination. The feedback we got was that it was, it was a good idea, it should continue, that the peer boards did a lot of meeting and talking, which is what we want, to try and uh create some cross-talk in town. Uh, but there wasn't as much public participation as we want, but that that happens with first time things, we're gonna try and continue to do these open houses to get people. And three things in particular. Q R S D, the Finance Committee, and the Board of Health, those are all extremely important um boards and el- and elected positions that have vacancies. And so school committee, um, continue to hear assessment issues and budget issues, it's fifty-seven percent of our budget, without having another voice there, that's that's a big deal.
So who do we have now? Uh, Bill?
Bill Hanson and.
Jason Leclerc, did he do it?
It's two.
Is Debbie Chamberlain on there?
Debbie, Debbie Chamberlain?
That would be so.
I was trying to figure out if if.
Dave Correa was a write-in. We have four, right? It was Mark, Debbie.
Mm.
Mark Wiggler.
Bill.
Debbie, Bill, yeah, I'm trying to figure out what, unless one of those is done, and then Jason Leclerc was, he was on the scholarship committee.
So who didn't run this year?
I don't know, 'cause Bill did. I don't know if Debbie didn't, I think she she's pretty involved.
There's only one, I think.
Not Mark.
I don't know if that's on the town website.
Yeah, actually it would be under, uh, is it under?
I think it's on the Q R S D website.
But it's, yeah, we should have it here, I don't think it is.
Yeah, it's not on there.
It's right here.
We should have it there, but I don't think it is, I feel like I've looked.
School resources, maybe?
I think I looked at this before.
Yeah, so Jason Leclerc did not run, that's the vacancy.
Okay.
So we, we, Hanson, Mark, Debbie, and Deborah.
Bill Hanson, Mark Wiggler, Mitch and.
Mm.
That's a big one. The Finance Committee's down to three people right now, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there, so actually there there are, so the school committee is full, because Bill Hanson ran again, unopposed, Mark is on till next year.
They're on.
Debbie must have.
And says Jason didn't run.
Debbie. So Jason didn't run, and it was a write-in, um, Dave Correa won.
Who's gonna accept it?
He accepted it, yeah.
Okay, then, oh, fucked. Not a date with that information, so I'll just push the Finance Committee.
Then.
So there's just two on the Fi- or three on the Finance Committee now?
Yes.
We need five.
So Tim, uh, Susan, Susan and.
Susan. Gosh, she's off.
Tim's not?
He did not run.
Yeah, no. Yeah, Tim's.
Finance, Susan, Shannon, Tim, Josh.
There were vacancies.
And Tim didn't run.
So there's two vacancies.
Tim I showed a twenty nineteen.
Tim says twenty nineteen.
Mm.
Alright, anyway, so we've got some vacancies, we'll work it out.
Yeah. And Board of Health, so Board of Health has strong jurisdictions in town.
Yeah.
Um, so just looking for more assistance.
Right.
Good way to see that. Alright, the website launch, as Lori alluded to, is going to be on Wednesday, so this is our current website. Here. Very familiar with this from my time researching this position. And this is what our new website's gonna look like, that will launch on the twentieth.
Any any significant changes from the one we've raised?
So this, um, where do I go for is quick answers or like an F A Q for people. Um, the most commonly asked questions that we have access and can update. The department is a little bit more user-friendly and easier to use.
Is the, Jamie, didn't you suggest the schools link or something like that?
It was on there.
It was, it was.
It was under, uh, it was like school resources, yeah.
Okay.
So we'll be mon-
No, on the new one.
Oh, I don't know, I was.
I feel like. You saw a version of this, I feel, alright, did I dream that?
So we'll be monitoring, um, people who, people who access information on the website, so this hub is the most commonly accessed or most needed parts of the website.
I'm picturing that.
And then these tabs are continually updated, different links to social media and the calendar, and then these big sections down here, we're gonna be focusing on presenting information about the town center, about our economic development, and uh the great hubris and special events.
Great.
The picture will change.
The picture is not current.
And this is the same company, right? Virtual Town Hall?
Yes.
Correct. Virtual Town Hall was just merged with um Civic Plus, another company, so you'll see a lot of benefit I'm sure out of that. And the office hours, it was actually from a resident, and it's going to be all the office hours of every department, so you're not gonna have to go page by page to find it. When a department is open, it's, you'll find it all in that one section.
Okay.
Is there a report, some documents?
They will be here. And to include, um, each department's being asked to review theirs and try and come up with creative ways to make information public, like the road plan you saw tonight, or different plans and presentations we'll give you throughout the year. Uh, just different ways to, for people to digest information. Not everybody goes online, but a lot of people do, and uh we wanna make sure they can get this stuff.
The the thing, you know, we're doing, I do our company's website every couple of years or whatnot, the main thing, right, A, it's a, it's a big task, but is to not to have too many to-dos.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean, on a, on a regular basis to have to, 'cause then it just becomes so cumbersome to have to update it all the time with all sorts of other documents, so anyway, I mean.
We're gonna make people responsible for their own sections right now, and do the bulk of it, and that gives them, you know, the ability, like Katie, you know, comes in, can you add this flyer, can you do this, which is fine, I mean, we update it, but it's also good if she can do it, and you know, that way if I'm out, she has access to do her own, and she would be limited to her page.
Sure. Perfect. Yep. Yeah. Very sorry to ask this next question, 'cause I know we don't wanna do any more policies, but do we need or have a policy for website update, you know? You know what I mean?
We will.
We will, and they are limited, whoever we give the access to, they're only limited to their one section, when we do it that way.
Yes.
So there are controls in place.
Yes.
Yeah, alright, well, we should probably just make it a couple paragraphs.
Yeah.
We do have our social media and internet policy, so make sure that's updated to include that.
Okay.
That's the website launch. The next one I wanna show you is employee vacancies. We currently have a vacancy for uh custodian position, this was part of bargaining with the uh D P W and also town meeting voted to approve this, so we'll be hiring custodian, um, working in four buildings and a little bit more control of our cleanliness.
How many hours a week was that? I forgot.
Twelve.
So if I make, anybody wants it with five, it opens up in.
Please do. Uh, one of the uh initiatives I promised that we finally were able to launch is we're calling it All Department Report. So each department in the community is giving information publicly about what they did for the last month and what they plan to do for the next month. So the next report will have a highlight section and a next month section to kind of limit the impact on the departments, which is key in our staff meeting. So this month's report uh includes uh my office, the Police Department, Fire Department, the Library, Department of Public Works, Treasure Collector assessing, Accounting, Board of Health, Town Clerk, and ways to access us. So this is, has a couple things, more transparency for the public to see what the, each department is doing, and also highlighting the work that departments do. Not everyone knows what departments do, they think that, um, some people think that sometimes departments aren't necessary, or or maybe they're overworked, right? So this is a chance for the departments to showcase what they do, and for the town to learn a little bit more about their government. We will be working on another report, similar, called the All Board Report and Committees, which will be the same structure but for our uh elected and appointed boards. So the way we're gonna work that to limit the volunteer time is we will do the reaching out, um, I will be writing the report, and then filling in information on a as-needed or volunteer basis. So that would be shared inter-board and to the public, so people can see and start to to cross-talk on what things might help in in the coordination of effort.
Tom?
Our our, what, how does it interface with meeting minutes? I mean, meeting minutes are the legal document.
They won't go away.
Well, I know that, but um if no one ever looks at them and they only look at a one sentence, they're not gonna get the flavor of what's going on.
True, but the idea is that there's, some people won't read minutes, they're too cumbersome to.
We might make a link.
Oh, yeah, we can make minutes, yeah. If you want more, go here, something about it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Ed. I just wanna comment on this here, I think this is excellent. Uh, question, is there a possibility for you to be able to send these out to people who subscribe here in town?
So we're we-
I mean, the frequency seems like it's coming out once a month, it's not gonna be necessarily something to over overwhelm their uh their inboxes.
So we talked about this with our new website developer, there's a news alert section that we're gonna highlight and and push, that you can just click a button and you'll get that email anytime we publish it to the particular section, so.
Yeah. So I guess the question would be is, is I believe that the town does have lists of people's emails, even notifying them of the availability of this year and to be able to subscribe may increase your audience, and it's certainly something I would encourage you to do. We are looking for participation by the townspeople, and this is really a, I think it's, it's a fantastic thing that we're doing here.
And I'd like to thank the the departments for putting it up to me and building this, but um, every department was on board and I think they see the value of it.
Okay.
We haven't met in a while, that's why I've been doing things. Alright, so I talked about volunteer vacancies, just uh some elections and special thanks, I'd like to congratulate our recent election winners. It takes a special resident to break the vigors of a local campaign to help lead the activities of their town. Uh, I'm looking forward to working with these resident volunteers to continue Hubbardston's future. Um, there's a couple folks that I'd like to point out for their volunteer time. Uh, one is uh Lucinda Oats, who's a member of the Hubbardston Board of Health, she, years and years of public service, both working for the town and in a volunteer capacity.
Mm.
Uh, she helped improve the quality of life in Hubbardston for years and years, just wanted to recognize her. Also Vin Ritchie, more than twenty years of volunteer service in Hubbardston, to include his efforts on the School Committee, Finance Committee, and Planning Board. Uh, his dedication to zoning bylaws and business development helped make Hubbardston what it is, and his uh impact will be felt for decades to come. So I talked to the board about this, um, we're gonna invite those folks back so we can formally recognize them if they choose to come, to and and thank them in person for their, for their um contribution to the town.
Great.
Couple more public safety recon- recognition, so the Hubbardston Police and Fire were involved in a search for two runaway juveniles last week. Uh, the search involved Massachusetts State Police air wing, two K nine units, the Rutland and Oakham, it was a big deal, we were tracking it all day. Juveniles were thought to be possibly armed with a bat, so four hours of intense searching by our departments, uh, they they located these juveniles on Barry Road. Um, pretty dangerous, was talking to the chief about it, so when they found him, they were laying on the ground and and people were actually walking by, which is a cop's or a police officer's worst nightmare, when they can't see someone that might be possibly armed. So everybody knows it takes a brave person to be a police officer or firefighter, but I just wanted to call out, you know, the willingness to do that on behalf of the town, and very pleased that there were no, no one injured. No one was injured to include um the juveniles during the efforts.
There there was another incident recently, right? Did you see that? The seventeen-year-old?
With the um.
Stetson School?
No.
I didn't see that one.
My wife showed me something from Facebook that was just a couple of days ago, or I forgot, anyway, yeah.
Oh, the Stet, yeah.
It was, yeah, another one escaped.
Another one escaped from Stetson School. I I don't know how that, the epilogue for that, but um, it's, there is a, there's a, uh, the, I don't know if it's the next or when they even are, but I remember the the person who, uh, the 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 text I read, that was a a snapshot of the post
Yeah, he wandered on.
uh, said it was, it was a woman who was going to be, was trying to garner support to go to the next Barry Select Board meeting to discuss why this is happening, and what the controls are in place and all that sort of stuff, so I think there's gonna be more conversation about that very soon.
Yeah, I think that's been on goal, and you're like, talk of offense.
Yeah. Yeah, right.
Mm.
Around the place.
Well, I mean, the the police have done a good job, uh, with the press lately, there's been some press around because of some of these incidents. Um, I I get texts and updates from from our leaders in the Police Department all the time, and they just wanna to highlight some of their efforts when we can.
Yeah.
We certainly, um, can't share everything that's going on with investigations and stuff, but um, they do a lot of dangerous work, and they should be recognized. And then employee recognition first.
Oh.
Young lady to my right, Lori, for organizing the open house prior to the town meetings, great chances, we talked about, for for the vo- volunteers to meet each other, and to talk about maybe coordinating efforts, and also residents to see what volunteer opportunities exist.
You've been busy. You both.
I don't just sit in there all day.
Make sure she, she works. And then, um, just wanted to recognize, so it's up here on the screen, Craig, a member of our D P W, is also a volunteer in the community, recently completed the Bay State Road Scholar Program. So this isn't a small thing, it's um seven trainings of at least six hours apiece, so it's it's quite a program. This makes him a a road scholar, as they call it, but but someone who is um even even more professional by furthering their education and learning about roads. So this is one of our employees going above and beyond, um, getting the type of education we need to to make those road plans happen, right, to make the um, the the stuff that we need to do necessary in order to improve the town.
And keep, and keep our D P W director on his toes?
Yes. That, that is my report.
Thank you. Uh. Okay, so we've got a, we've got a whole bunch of appointments. This became a bit of a hot button last year, last June.
So the la- so what you see is the listing, the only one that I can tell you that has changed, so the yellow ones are ones that are up this year, but they haven't actually confirmed that they're going to stay on again. Um, I did hear back from two today, that changed since I had printed this. One is going to be, um, Cheryl Slack, she is going to be staying on. Um, and then there was a, the Planning Board Associate Member, Mark Dimick, does not wish to stay on unless um he can't, unless they can't find anybody, and then he'll stay on if needed.
So, so say that one more time, so yellow is pending response, and green.
Yellow is pending response, correct. Green is the ones that have confirmed, um, so these are all confirmed. Any vacancies and stuff I took off for you just so it was easier to read, 'cause it was enough as it is.
Green they have response.
Sure.
So. Can we just confirm these uh as a block, we have to go with each individual one?
I don't know if you just need to read them, you know, that you're con- that you're appointing them.
Last year what we did, 'cause we didn't do the D P W directors, we excluded that one, and we did a mass, I don't, we did not read all these.
Yeah, I think you just need to appoint the, you know, the whole block.
So how about we make a motion to appoint um, all confirmed, appointed.
um, all confirmed appointed volunteers as presented?
Okay.
So then the ones in yellow, then we will hold off until we get confirmation.
Cause the listing was online, so.
Mm-hmm.
There's a lot.
There are a lot.
Okay, so I'll make that motion to confirm all, uh, to appoint all confirmed, uh, appointed committee volunteers as presented.
Second the motion.
And just, just, I'm, it's probably unnecessary, but if you wouldn't mind s- suggest an, uh, uh, amendment to, to, to just read the department, the, not all the names, but at least the, the headings, so that'll be sort of memorialized?
Sure, so affordable housing.
You okay with that?
Yep, yep.
Affordable housing, agricultural commission, animal inspector, animal control officer, building commissioner, cable advisory committee, community preservation committee, conservation commission, constable, council on aging, cultural council, DPW director, election workers, emergency management planning committee, fire department, hazardous waste coordinator, historical commission, inspectors, mart advisory board, memorial day committee, Monticletto Joint Transit Committee, Monticletto Regional Vocational School Committee, open space committee, parking clerk, I don't know, you had a parking clerk, um.
Sandy.
Planning board, police department, records access officers, sexual harassment officer, special events committee, town center committee, town clerk, treasurer collector, tree warden, veterans agent, zoning board of appeals.
Any discussion? Ed, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, the, um, the associate for the planning board was Mark Dimick, and said he would, would, uh, only serve if somebody else didn't have an interest in the position.
Right, or I think it was worded, unless it was needed.
Yeah, and, uh, I see Mr. Steiger, uh, submitted a letter saying that he would have an interest in the, uh, planning board association.
Okay, yes.
So I'd like to ask, would you give him consideration?
I see that letter in here.
So we did, we did give that today.
Yep.
My suggestion for best practice would be to give an X amount of time for every committee that has a vacancy to weigh in on their applicants or suggest applicants to, just to get their feedback before you make a decision. Um, although very qualified candidates have, have, have given their names, it, it, it might be best practice to have people weigh in.
Well, we've, many times, people have just brought people in here in the same sort of format, um, and we've sort of asked them what their experience is and that sort of thing, and gone, gone through with it. So we, we've never done what you just said. Tom?
Uh, I think you have done what he just said. Uh, I've been nominated as both an associate and a member of various committees, and the committees brought the name to this select board. Uh, for instance, the planning board's having a meeting Wednesday, where we'll reorganize and, and think up, uh, possible, and consider Mr. Steiger as well, if we got his letter, um, who, who might serve as the associate, and we'll come to you with a name, or two. That's the way it was done when I got on it.
Mm-hmm. I feel like, why, why don't we, uh, vote on this at the next meeting, that if, we'll defer to the planning board, that if you guys have a, a name, or had to get a chance to talk to Mr. Steiger and.
I don't think it's inconsistent. I thought your motion was to do everything except the yellows.
That's exactly what my motion was.
Yeah, so it's not inconsistent.
No, but I think we're, we're still having a discussion, cause during the discussion portion of this motion, new information sort of came up, as far as somebody willing to potentially, you know, make that row green, like in real time. So I think that's why we're talking about it, is what, whether or not that that's something we'd, we'd wanna do, uh.
I would ask the question, are people familiar enough to know that in fact there is an opening, et cetera, and so on, or should we be, as Mike was saying, deferring to the planning board to give them the time to find out if in fact any, you know, there are any other people, and in which case they would have to make a decision who they wanna bring forth?
Well, it's not a, I mean, this particular one is not a planning board decision, right? They don't, we'd be happy to take their recommendations, but this is a board of select.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Well, I meant, then, who they would, yeah, okay.
Appointment. Um, but in the past, for empty boards, we have at least announced that at a board meeting.
Sure.
And then come back at the next board meeting and taking all interested parties to, just so everyone has a fair opportunity, exactly like the chair.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
But I think it's, I think it's fair to wait one, one meeting cycle.
Uh, yes, indicate that, I mean, for me, it would be an honor to be able to participate in such a manner for the, uh, Tom Hubbardson, and I absolutely respect the protocol that has been espoused here,
Mm.
and there's really absolutely no interest in myself being appointed tonight, if that's not the case.
Okay.
Um, I'm more than happy to speak with the planning board directly, so let's follow the protocol and make sure that everything is above board, and that, uh, we have consensus in terms of how we move forward.
Okay. Thank you for, uh, putting your name out there.
Yes, very much so.
Very welcome.
Happy to see you.
Are you, are you Mr. Steiger?
I am, Mr. Steiger.
Oh. Pleasant to meet you.
Is there, uh, any more discussion?
Yeah, I had just a question on that memorial day committee.
Sure, yes.
I noticed Tom's name isn't, i- has he officially asked it? Cause he was hinting around at, during the, uh, ceremony. Okay, so he's.
Correct. Yes, he has. Yeah. So Tom Collier is what he's responding to, his, uh, memorial day committee. He has resigned from the committee, um, said he that.
He might be another one we might wanna add to that list of people you wanna thank, call in and thank for, for all their efforts, cause he's done it for years, organize these things, you know?
Okay, any further discussion on this?
Open motion?
No. Uh, all in favor?
Yes.
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 Yes, okay. So the next, uh, exclusive, removing the, 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 uh, um, the, the planning board associate member from the discussion for a moment, we still have a bunch of yellows, right?
Mm-hmm.
So we're, we're gonna, do we, we're gonna, do, we reach out to all those people and sort of say, here's your last shot, or?
Yep, so letters were sent, yeah, letters were sent to some of them because we didn't have email addresses. So when people are appointed this year, what I did was I actually gave Joyce slips that says, this is, you know, I want your updated contact information with a phone, cell phone, your email if you have one, and what the best way to contact you is, because a lot of the things are old in there of email addresses that are being sent back, and obviously that's not gonna work well.
Okay. Sure.
Um, so I have reached out. There are a couple of questions on some of the vacant ones, um, for the affordable housing, as to who's appointed now with the planning board being changed a little bit, obviously with Mr. Holman's being appointed. Um, so there were a couple of questions that Ryan was looking into, and then, like I said, I'm waiting for these ones back, and I can always look them up and find them and, and go from there.
Okay.
And then we can just post, we'll start, once the website is updated, we can start posting the vacancies. You know, right now, we just, as I said, we can't make any changes, so it's hard.
And it's probably not, you know, if you have, you know, especially for committees or, or whatever that have been together for a while.
Mm-hmm.
If you, you know, contact somebody else on that committee, or the chair of that committee or whatnot, to reach out to that person too, there might be, uh, other channels that they may, uh, make it more efficient.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Right, you know, let them know that there's a vacancy. And that's one of the things that we started trying to have the board and committees meet, and, you know, hopefully get the word out, and as town meeting got closer, they were getting busier, but again, it's the first time, so, you know, maybe it's something we do a couple times a year, even though appointments are one.
Yes. Okay. Okay, we are at, uh, okay to move on? Yes?
Yeah, I was just, if, if any of these need to be explained further, uh, in particular, like Bill Holman, for example, in zoning board of appeals, the, the reason why I'm looking into that is, uh, he was a member and not from the planning board, and there's already a slotted planning board member, so I wanna make sure that it's not illegal or against the rules to have two planning board members on the zoning board of appeals that might cause a conflict.
Okay.
So while they, you know, could put him on as a planning board member, it's unclear at this point, it's unorganized, so just looking into items like that.
Okay.
Excuse me, what do you mean by a slotted member?
Making sure that the, uh, the person on the zoning board of appeals doesn't have to be from the planning board.
There.
That you may appoint someone to the zoning board of appeals, if I'm understanding it correctly?
I don't think we have that.
That, that would answer it. So we're just making sure that it crosses.
I, 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 well, I'll have to check with the past chairman to see what's going on, but I almost call that.
But, but, many of these committees, it's this, and this, and this, uh, point.
I, I, I would almost think it would be a conflict.
Right. So I'm also looking into that, to be on both as well, so.
To be on both committees. Yeah. The other area that, uh, I would bring up is inspectors. I, I, uh, read where you, Ryan, were seeking, uh, or having discussion about hiring a health agent, that we wouldn't have, um, board of health members actually doing inspections.
Not, not quite what I said, instead of investigating as to whether or not that is, uh, proper, appropriate, legal, and that the, the, uh, board numbers are also protected from liability.
Well, the, it's not just liability, it's the conflict or the appearance of conflict. So I, I would suggest you look into that as well.
I am, and, uh, it's, it's been very unclear from many people in the field that that's not a le-, it's not illegal. It just might not be best practice.
But that's not how we operate.
I understand, that's why we're looking into it.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, sixteen is committee updates. The Q E M P task force, I know I already mentioned it briefly, but we had the, which I think Tom was at, uh, we had the, um, the, at, at Regal School, uh, for all the towns. They had done individual ones in each town. This was the sort of final event, uh, where everyone was brought together who was interested to talk about the four main areas the Q E M P had been focusing on, regionalized services, uh, business development, um, uh, educational options, uh, school reuse options, all that sort of stuff. So, um, uh, it was broken off into four groups generally. After a couple addresses, I did an address, and Janet Pierce from the, uh, uh, CMRPC did an address, did, did an excellent job, and then, um, Trish Suddles as well from CMRPC. And we, we, the main thing, you, yes, we're gonna generate a report eventually, right? This hundred and seventy thousand dollar report is what it's ultimately gonna be, from the Collin Center to the, to the, the hundred thousand dollar grant that we got here, plus the seventy. Um, but the main thing that us as a, as a Q E M P task force didn't wanna lose sight of was, it can't just end, cause what do we do? We generated some paper. So what the, and, and CMRPC, uh, knows this, and they couldn't agree more, e- even though this is sort of a new process that they, um, uh, are, are going through with us, uh, regionalized, uh, towns, all trying to do an effort like this. So there are working groups that have already been established, that are within each of, from interested members who have been participating throughout this, you know, nine-month process. Uh, there's a select board member from here, there's a finance committee from here, there's a, you know, who are, who make one working group. They all signed up that night. So it was like, we got everybody here, you know, put them on spot, sign up for your, your group. I signed you up for one of them. And, um, and, and so that working group is, is going to, you know, discuss, uh, moving forward, and, you know, the working group for the business develop, for the, um, economic development, uh, will be, their point person will be the new economic development coordinator that will be funded through the hundred thousand dollar grant from Hardwick that is received, that's in the process of. So anyway, the, the point was to get to a point where it's not gonna just stop, so everyone's still gonna sort of be involved, and the task force is gonna carry on, and, um, you know, we'll see what the next step is from there.
Just to add to that, we are meeting as the, the economic development coordinator group.
Yep.
Um, you appointed me to, to help lead that. We're meeting next week, the twenty-six, in interviewing candidates.
Yeah. Nice.
So that's closed, and we should have someone selected in the next couple of weeks.
Nice. Uh, town center committee, we, we met, um, before town meeting, um, just to sort of organize ourselves, and, uh, then, you know, without a, you know, hitch, the money was, was approved at town meeting for the hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we're now, um, you know, we've let T E C, the engineering firm, know, and they're gonna just get going on, um, uh, on the remainder of the design. So there are some considerations that have to do with the complete street sidewalk Brian was, Ryan was talking about. Um, and then where we terminate the, uh, Route sixty-eight north portion of it, cause there could be some additional design. So we're trying to get a full-on picture of, of if, and how much there's gonna be some additional design money in the future needed for. And this final contact that we just received from complete streets coordinator, just a day or two ago, that Ryan referenced ear- earlier, is gonna finally give us the, the, the fact that they're allowing us to remove potentially the sidewalk to the rec field and bring it down to Elm Street, was something we didn't know if we could do or not. But now that we find out we can do, T E C can give us an accurate picture on what the design elements are in there. I'm hoping they just come back and say, we'll just do it. Um, you know, we've got plenty of money from you guys, we've got plenty of work from you guys. That's what I'm hoping for. I've been pushing that, just push, 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 but we'll see. The, in the next couple of days, I think, uh, Mike will be able to get back to us on that. So that's that. And then, I think we could probably.
I was gonna say, I think we should just take it off. No, they're done.
Bye, our committee, we're done.
They're not, they're good.
Yep. Minutes. All right, we got minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from May seventh as presented?
Uh, Jeff was the only one not here?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Abstain.
So.
Just a quick question on these minutes.
Yep.
Has this Sharon vaguely received a response or a letter?
Yes, okay.
Certified.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I, you know, I sure brought that to, I, when I read it for certain, it's the first thing I thought of.
Yeah, and she did receive it, so.
Okay. Okay, so we've got union contracts?
We did, so, uh, we met today in executive session about, um, our union contracts. We have two unions up this year. The Teamsters Union Local one seventy, known commonly as the DPW, and New England Police Benevolent Association Inc., Local zero nine two, known as the, uh, our police officers. So, um, we will present as much, or, or as little information as we want here, but just wanted to talk about the process. So we met with officials from each union, um, at least three times, police particular, who improved communications going back and forth. Um, there was an agreement made after, uh, three sessions for both, and, uh, they went pretty smoothly. I just wanted to thank the, um, Teamsters Union Local one seventy for their, for their efforts working with me, and our, our local stewards to, uh, to come to an amicable agreement, and the same with our, uh, local representation with the police officers. Thought it went very well. Um, we had strong working sessions without, um, any motions or anything like that. That can sometimes come with these negotiations, and we feel that we have a, a settlement that's fair for our employees and retention, in addition to controlling costs long-term. Um, I don't know how normally, how much information you want me to present, including?
I don't, I mean, I, I don't, I don't, uh.
These will become public documents as soon as this is presented, don't you know?
Yeah, I don't think anything really.
Yeah, just post them.
I think we just, we just post them, and, and, um, we, we're gonna have to vote on them in pu-, in open session here?
Mm-hmm.
So what happened was today we discussed these and approved them in executive session. Now they need to be done in open sessions, so that they become public documents and be reviewable. Um, one thing that's important to note is that, uh, the budget that was passed by town meeting did include dollar amounts that can support these contracts, so we don't need any additional money to move forward with, uh, paying employees starting July one, two thousand eighteen.
Great.
So I'll make a motion to approve the Teamsters Union Local one seventy contract.
Second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Abstain.
And we need a motion.
Second please.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, police contract as presented.
Second that motion.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Any old business? Anyone at the table here?
Uh, have you traveled on sixty-two? I noticed they, uh, put some barriers out down where there was a culvert replacement. It says one lane.
Uh, yeah.
Oh, I didn't see it.
I didn't have, yeah, just, uh, just some signs. You can still kinda squeeze through there, but it looks like that it must be deteriorated.
Yeah.
Just one page.
Uh.
Yep, I just did the top, so your report is left in.
And also the Hubbardson Fair is Saturday.
Oh, right, Hubbardson Fair Saturday.
I did have one old business.
Uh, Tom, uh, old business, uh, what's the process now for the library, now that you have all the funding for the roof?
Well, um, I'm not sure what it means to have all the funding.
Well, if you have everything approved that you need, so what's the?
Uh, we have the. All right, well, uh, the, the process I think is twofold. There's the technical roof process, and then there's the financial process. Uh, I need to meet with you regarding, uh, or actually, I shouldn't speak this way, the library trustees need to meet with you to determine, um, the process by which money becomes available, uh, and is fully accounted. I wanna understand where all the money comes from, uh, how much we're paying for that money, if we're, if there's any borrowing.
There is no.
Pardon?
There's no borrowing. Well, the CPA, right.
Yeah, there's borrowing. And, and, uh, the timing of that, and how it becomes accessible, and when it becomes accessible. And then on the technical side, uh, we plan on having a meeting with the architect, um, and ask him to help us plan, uh, developing a schedule of activities and a schedule of values, uh, so we can pay for it. Uh, schedule activities is obvious, you know, do certain things at certain times. And then, um, we will probably have a public meeting. I might be getting ahead of myself a little bit, but I personally would like to have a public meeting about, uh, here's the plan.
And then plans and specifications and procurement?
Well, plans, specifications, uh, procurement of a, of, with a general contractor, I believe. And there's some preliminary work that needs to be done around the building to make sure that when you do the roof, all the stormwater blows away appropriately.
Right.
We don't want downspouts bubbling over and whatnot, so we're, we're gonna do something to clear that path.
An important, I think, thing that your architect will probably bring up, but it's definitely something you wanna, gonna wanna hear about, is, you know, ensuring that you have, uh, D C A M certified contractors, that's the Department of, uh,
Capital Asset.
Capital Asset Management, um, because those are the firms that have gone through all the licensing and insurance, insurity processes with the state, within the specific trade of roofing. It's actually called roofing, they have them in all different ones. But that's a, um, it's a very popular one, and it's a important one, and it's a, it's a good way to stay out of trouble one, too. So I'm sure the architect will probably bring that up, but.
Our, our architect is quite qualified. Our architect is quite qualified, he he does things like Worcester City Hall and tile, you know, he really, uh, understands roofing very, very well.
Yeah. Who is it?
The firm's name is NALT, the head of the firm is a person named Stephen Van Zandt, uh, Stephen Van Dyke.
Okay.
Who, uh, lives in in, uh.
Barry, in fact. Oh, nice. Okay. Good.
I I just wanted to thank Tom and his wife and also Carol, uh, Connie Strickmire, I mean, the the effort that they've put in in terms of making sure that the 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 issue with the library roof got, uh, publicized was really due to the very good work that you did and I want to congratulate you on that. Because that's not necessarily something that a lot of people have in their minds, uh, when they came to vote and by being outside, talking with people and explaining to them how you went about finding the resources, making them understand the the benefit of this year, I personally greatly appreciate it and I've heard very positive feedback and I want to applaud you for the work that you and your wife and everybody else.
I I really don't want the spotlight because there's just too many people.
Well, but I I.
Two or three.
We're up front there.
Two or three years of CPC work, they gave us seed money, uh, then they gave us ultimately larger amounts of money and they had a very difficult decision-making process with competing, or not competing, but alternative, uh, options for how to spend their money. And of course, there's a board of trustees and a very competent, uh, library director, uh, there's five people, you met Connie because she's, uh, Connie Strickmire because she's new and and running for office, but there's four others and some of them have served much, much longer than I have and they've done a great job.
I I'm not, I'm. I I'm not, I'm not, I'm not s- uh, taking anything away, but I saw you there at the election day, I saw you holding the placard and not everybody has the energy to do so and I want to make sure that the select board understands that that's, that 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 really is is presenting.
Well, thank you, but it's not, nothing happens by someone alone.
Absolutely.
Great, um, and and if, just to 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 put a a cherry on that, um, as far as when do we think it's going to happen? Like, when's it rea- like, we talk about a town center committee all the time, it's like, when is this actually going to happen?
I think it's going to be about two weeks, but the the dream.
Yeah, okay, fine.
The dream schedule would be, um, plans and specifications this summer, bidding in the fall. In the fall, the contractors are, uh, winding down off their seasonal work and they have the ability to effectively estimate jobs. And and so you really want to bid in the November, December, January timeframe, their next year is open and they're filling their year up and, um, so the work would be done in the summer of nineteen, now that's ideal.
Right.
Uh, I I, it's a snag list.
School would have to be out, right?
Well, we would have school out, we'd, we have, uh, a lot of safety concerns, uh, traffic, auto traffic, people traffic, people cutting behind the building, you know, we're we have that whole area, uh, uh, safety, safety, uh, secured. Uh, th- there's a lot of considerations, so room for a snag is possible, but I just gave you the ideal, oh, everything falls in place schedule.
Okay. Uh, okay.
Let's see.
Any other old business?
Edwin.
Yes.
Um, in, we've, we are in the, uh, I can't speak anymore, we are looking at re- the replacement of computers and our overall, um, usage of technology here in the town. It was put on hold waiting to hire me and we have a little bit of additional money in the I T budget, which we expected because not a lot was spent on computers. So it's a little prelude to, um, looking for support, it was something that was discussed in the past, to purchase an iPad for the special events coordinator. So the special events coordinator is a volunteer who recently had to replace her phone because of usage, I can't say for sure that that was because of townwork, but I do know how much townwork is done on that particular device. Um, would like to purchase this so that the town can become part of the town's economic development plan, so that it can be used for continuation of social media and using these special events to draw people to Hubbardson. So I think it's a, it's a good thing on the town side in terms of liability, would like to have, um, her sign an agreement that says she will only use it for town purposes, uh, to protect us from the way it's done and it would be assigned to the position, not the person. But, uh, in particular, this this machine will allow her to continue to create these flyers and these other advertisements for things like the fair this weekend, uh, to continue to communicate by email and do almost a daily social media presence.
So my thoughts are, A, she's never going to stop asking, and B, we don't want somebody who gets frustrated, who's going to give this much of their time, right?
Yeah.
To get sort of jaded or frustrated by the fact that it's hard because we can't figure out some waiver or agreement to sort of develop, so I think we should try to develop an agreement and go from there.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Definitely. I can make a motion to purchase the iPad or other similar device for our special events coordinator position.
Second the motion.
Discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
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 That's it.
Okay. Okay, public press question and answer, anybody want to add anything else to the end of this meeting?
I just have a a quick question, uh, if you may have it, uh, or for not, I'm just trying to find out, uh, as a board, does this board have a set of rules and regulations that are published and that I can maybe view?
Go ahead, press one. So our own specific rules and regulations for the select board, is that what you're asking?
It it applies to other boards too, but in, because I'm here in the presence of the select board, I'm just asking that question.
Generally? So we have a.
So the board has town policies, um, it's it's a few binders located in a couple of directions that have been approved over time and collected, I'm in the process of curating them
Yep.
and trying to make them more publicly available and also updating them.
I'm typically talking about a one, two pager that most towns have, which are just basically, these are the rules and the regulations by which the town board, uh, manages itself.
The town charter?
Yes, sorry?
Are we thinking the town charter?
Thinking the charter.
No, 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 I, you know, I I can take this offline, I can certainly show you.
Can you send me? Can you send me an example?
I can give you some examples and that would apply to pretty much any of the boards that exist here in town, I know that Westminster, uh, not Westminster, I know, other towns such as Groton has it and other pa- other towns, so I would like to, uh, if you don't have it, potentially propose that, uh, maybe you adopt something like this here, because it's just a way in which you can indicate that the ways in which a board manages itself, that for meetings, quorums, the basic definitions like that are instituted within here and 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 it's good practice to have and if you don't have, so I can certainly include one for you.
Isn't Robert? Isn't Robert?
I was thinking Robert was of order, was part of it, but I don't think he's actually even thinking that.
Well, you know, let's take a, this, it will maybe get an example and see.
No. I'd I'd more than happy to present you with some examples and that's, um, next time that we have a meeting, I can maybe explain it a little bit more and you can look at that and see if there's value for you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What should be in you know and we.
Happy to do so. Thank you.
Okay, any else?
Yeah, one last thing, Tom had mentioned gutters spewing, when I came on election day, the gutter over here in the school was was all backed up and the water was running off, and Ryan, if you could mention it for the school.
Anything else?
They're going on vacation soon, you better get them tomorrow.
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight nineteen.
Second, uh.
Discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thanks everyone.
I'll stop working.